Welcome to the December 12th, 2021, Harma City School District Board of Education's Special Work Session. I want everybody, everybody, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You've got everybody into their quickens of God.
Yeah. VFW, Target, and the same.
Rokoff, Mr. Nusio?
This is Rothz.
Present.
This is Carpus.
Present.
Mr. Price.
Present.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you. Unless there's an objection, we will dispense with the reading of the special meeting's notice. No objections. Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm that the public portion of this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
This is.
And can you please monitor livestreaming throughout?
Yes.
The public portion of this meeting, and if there's a problem, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulties can be addressed.
Yes, we will.
Okay. With that said, then, this is a work session. Basic rules for the work session is that the public is invited to follow along. However, only board members and superintendent, I believe, are allowed to comment. Correct. Correct. So with that said, Dr. Smiley, you begin.
Well, I appreciate you coming in early. You know, obviously, we talked quite a bit about what our next steps would be after we were unsuccessful with our bond issue attempts, both last November and then again in May. And we really all agreed, especially in informal conversations, you know, we needed to get through the board elections to make sure that we, you know, had the players in place, really. We've talked before about having three pillars, sort of aligning, to really be able to have a school construction project and successful bond issue. One is, you know, senior leadership team, Board of Education is the second, and then obviously, the third is the public. And so when we had sort of some variables, with the second variable being the Board of Education, we weren't going to advance some type of plan while we had four seats that were not settled. So now that we're through the board elections, it is time, really, to look at what our next step is. And that's what tonight is really going to be about. How do we take that next step? And we've sort of built this plan of exploration and really hoping to gather that consensus again around three verbs, and we'll refer to these three verbs throughout, but we want to educate as much as possible and more than we did last time. We want to plan, but we want to plan with ourselves, but also with public participation. And then, quite frankly, we want to inspire, because ultimately, new buildings, new campuses should be aspirational, they should be inspirational. And I think that we have to do a better job in a campaign format to make sure that we're able to do that. And we'll talk about campaigns tonight if we don't do that in the board, but I believe that will be an important arm, an important end. So that's what we're really going to come back to, and I think what I'll do is just go through each bullet, not each bullet point, but each bolded and underlined part, and see if there's any questions or comments from the board. So this is built around two assumptions. First, that we still seek to consolidate into new campuses. It's obviously important to address, and I know you can't participate in this, but, you know, I know we've had some conversations, I've had some conversations with Mr. Ruda, and I know that he certainly isn't necessarily for this, but, you know, I'm grateful that you listened to the presentation. And again, part of what we've said is educate, and we know that there are folks that are in our community that don't believe that these new campuses are important, and part of the goal is at least helping people to see that. So, Mr. Ruda, again, to be very, very, you know, blonde, there's no vote to put this on a bond issue or put this to a ballot, and, you know, we want to talk about the process and we want to educate people. So the first is, you know, the first assumption is that, you know, we do still seek to consolidate. And then the second is that community input is still important to the process. We've always talked about this being a community plan. We've always mentioned that any of us could right now, take a sheet of paper with 15 school names, go into a closet with three or four of us, and come out and say, here's the plan. It's not rocket science, right? I mean, there's 15 schools, there's 9,300 kids, how do you want to split them up? The magic of this, or the hope, hopefully, the magic that we're able to capture is getting a plan that three communities can get behind. That's the difficulty, and I think that we need to, again, redouble our efforts to get consensus, to get input that can lead to a coherent plan that folks will support. So before I go any further, any questions or comments about these assumptions?
Can you hear me? Steve Vaughn?
I heard Gibson in the background.
Steve? Your paper's moving.
He might have muted himself.
I just want to hear paper.
Such a great point.
Steve?
I'm going to call back. Hey, Steve, come on.
No, I wasn't muted. All right, hook up back here. Hear your noise.
Any questions or comments on the assumptions?
No.
We'll keep rolling then. The next consideration, and I want to make sure we include this into a public forum, is that between the last effort and now, we actually have seen our state share increase to 37%. It had been at 34%. So that really is, you know, again, moving in the right direction in terms of what percentage of the state would pay for. Again, it's important to remind people that that's of the co-funded segments, and part of the education process is...
I'll put you on speaker.
You good?
Can you hear us? Can you hear us, Steve? Steve?
I'll try calling back, but I'm not hearing you. Okay.
Can we just move this phone over here like we did last time? The big phone?
I don't remember ever doing this before, other than in my computer.
Steve didn't once remember if he said a bad word on speakerphone? Maybe else remember this?
Steve?
Yes, don't you remember?
I'm going to block that out. I'm usually the one that says something stupid.
Yeah, I don't...
All right, that doesn't move. Tough bananas if you can't. We'll send him some history time.
But you can also watch this on Facebook.
Oh, yeah.
All right, next. Timeline. And we laid this out again because I think there's, it's important for people to understand, we didn't just get here and now we're, you know, starting from scratch, and, well, we do want to educate people. It's important that people understand, we've been having these conversations now, we're going on five years. And I also know that, you know, that, that's just this process, right? And there's been conversations about redistricting and consolidating far beyond the last five years.
Decades.
Oh.
Decades.
Jimmy John, they're looking for someone.
Tiffany's right in the lobby. She's got it.
Tiffany has one.
This is not a casual work session for iPods.
I'm still out here.
Okay, we could, Steve, this will be available on Facebook.
Just let it go. Yeah. Are there any reception when you're in a...
Should we text someone? No, go to Facebook. Go to Facebook and watch it.
Or later. Please.
Tell them to text them.
So in 2017 was the first time OFCC set foot in the district. Their job was to look at all of our schools and say, is it smarter to renovate or rebuild? All of our schools surpassed the 66% threshold at the time. Just to be 100% accurate, Normandy was below it, but has eclipsed the 66% threshold since then. So the only money that we can get from the state in the OFCC is if we rebuild, not if we renovate. 2018, we brought in a team to work through educational visioning, where stakeholders took a look at new qualities, or qualities they would want to see in new facilities. We actually used these in 2019, too. So I, you know, sometimes people say, well, what happened to this, or what happened to that? I mean, this is all lining up. So the core values are the, you know, pieces they really wanted to see in new construction, where the facilities would be flexible and open, include capacity for much technology, allow for student and teacher innovation and collaboration, and consist of adaptable, welcoming, and community-friendly environments. So that work is still here, and would guide any construction project that we had. 2019 was really when we dove headfirst and did a, really, a road show to end all road shows. We had 24 different community meetings. Those were just the ones that we actually planned, or some that folks invited us to, and we did sort of impromptu. We had an online survey. The key point that I want to delineate here is that both of those, the online survey and the campus, on-campus presentations, they were just sort of an all-call method. Like, we sat on a robocall and said, hey, we're going to have a strategic consolidation meeting, come on up if you want. And I think we need to be more intent about how we get people involved, and I think we need a longer commitment than really sort of a 45-minute PowerPoint that people learn superficial law of what's happening and then sort of cast a vote. So we'll talk about how we want to address that. The recommended master planning from that, as we know, is two secondary campuses, Normandy and Valley Forge, six elementary sites. We always said the sites would come later. We wanted to wait until our secondary campuses were built, see what enrollment trends looked like at that point, see what demographics looked like, and where people were sort of settling. And then finally, the use of Harma Senior High as an educational community center. 2020, we're on the ballot, 6.5 mil, issue 73, lost, 27,897 to 23,658. I'll come back to that number because I think it's a critical number, 23,658. So it's, it's very easy to get bogged down in the negative numbers, and I certainly have 63 to 37 tattooed across my forehead, and I think it's my license plate now, so I'll never forget the loss of May of 2021, when it was, it was quite a, quite a, quite a loss there, a very daunting loss. But there were 23,568 folks who actually did vote for this, and that means that by and large, those folks are still out there. How do we identify them? How do we make sure we communicate with them? And how do we get them out? Because even if half of those came back to the ballot in May, we're not talking about what are we doing next, we're talking about building plans, we're talking about site plans, we're talking about architectural renderings of what we're looking forward to. And I want us to always remember that 23,658, which is why there's a post-it right there for it. So now we get to 2022, and strategic consolidation was clearly not successful. We want to call this Building Our Future. I am certainly open to comments on that, and this is not set in stone, but I thought it was, again, aspirational, ties in building and the fact that we really do want to look at our facilities. But also, it's not cliche to say that, you know, these kids really are our future, and quite frankly, this is the future of our community. Any, any school project has many more implications beyond the students it serves. It's a community-based approach, it's a community change, it's a transformation and renewal of, in this sense, three communities. And so we want to make sure that we encapsulate that with Building Our Future. Any questions about the timeline, any comments about the timeline, and then we'll go through what we're envisioning here.
No. The consolidation word and changing that, I'll have a comment about that later.
So, Building Our Future, if we wanted to start with, you know, sort of the objective, like any teacher would in their classroom, we want to engage a committed group of stakeholders in a series of meetings to ensure that we consider educated community input and building a master plan for our schools. Couple key words there, right? Series of meetings, educate a committed group of stakeholders. It can't just be, you know, the 45-minute PowerPoint. Yes, we'll have that, and this, this needs to be an all-in effort. So, you know, yes, we're going to have these community meetings, but then we can also put the community meetings on Facebook, and people can watch these things. But we want a group of 45, or 60, or 75, or 100 people come to these meetings, and that's your core group of stakeholders. And we want to be aggressive in getting folks from all three cities, from all different walks of life, from all different groups, and whoever they can possibly represent. We want them coming to really a series of four key meetings that will lead to that actual plan by the end of April. It has to be an educational process. We stumbled and we fell short of that last time. So the questions, believe it or not, these questions are quite frankly the same questions we tried to ask in 2019. Not we tried to ask, we did ask. These questions aren't new because it's still the same process. What should our elementary options look like? What should our secondary options look like? Do we want one high school, two middle schools? Do we want three secondary campuses? What locally funded initiatives should we prioritize? Do we want to pay for on-tourists? Do we want to pay for pools? Well, that's, that's an upcharge. And again, I think we tried to ask those questions last time, but I want to do so in a more, you know, more thorough way and take more time to educate our folks. What current properties do you most prefer we continue to utilize for elementary schools, for secondary schools? We asked that question, and we asked it very sincerely, and then people were shocked when we actually took the data and said, well, you know, these are the two places that we want to put schools. There was no consensus. If you look back at the data from the processes that we went through, it didn't, you didn't have 200% of the people saying, hey, stay at Harma Senior High. It was all over the place. Harma Senior High had as many votes as Valley Forge, had as many votes as Normandy. So that, you know, then led to us sort of making that decision, and it was clearly a dramatic one. So, again, trying to make sure we educate folks, and I know I keep coming back to educate, but that key verb is really what we want to do. If we have to build phases, should we prioritize elementary or secondary? That's a viable question. I know secondary has always been the conversation in this district, but certainly there are advantages to starting with elementary, and I think we have to open that conversation again. I think we have to say to people, elementary really are our oldest schools. And quite frankly, if we started elementary and we introduce our kids to, you know, new facilities and potentially new ways of learning, and new structures that they're going to walk through, and new technology, and new STEM labs, and potentially a community service aspect to their education with a community room in every school, does that then more naturally lend itself to a secondary campus? Would we be better off taking the big bite, because always that first phase is your biggest bite of your approach to new construction? Are we better off taking that big bite with the elementary, because the secondary is more extensive, but now you have the discount coming, because the state owes you money from the first phase? These are conversations we need to, again, engage in with our community and see, you know, where they are. We envision, if you are accepting of this plan, next week would be a very aggressive invitation campaign. We want to reach out to PTAs, booths, or student representatives, community leaders. The key piece, and we were criticized for this, and quite frankly, we were accurately criticized for this, we need to make sure this is district residents only. These are the folks that live here, these are the folks that are paying the taxes, these are the folks that are paying for the projects. And last time, we did not delineate that, it really was the all-call. We will get the input of staff who doesn't live here, if we're fortunate enough to pass, because then, they're the folks doing the work in the facility, and they need to help us shape them. But in terms of, you know, where schools are going to be and how many they're going to be, we owe it to the taxpayers to have that process. And so it's really important, I think, that we say that. We'll also have an open invitation through social media. Amy is phenomenal, getting things out. I think our social media campaign is very strong, very robust. So it really is, it's all of those things, right? When people say, are we going to do this, we're going to do that, we're going to do all of them. Yes, if you want to talk to this person, talk to them. I want our board members to reach out to their context. We need your help, we need your engagement. Reach out to your context and say, hey, here's what we're looking at. An hour, hour and a half meeting, four times, to come out with another master plan. That's essentially what we're going to look at. So committee meetings, there would be a Tuesday cohort, a Wednesday cohort, and a Thursday cohort. See, there's different times there. So Tuesdays at 4:00 p.m., Wednesdays at 7:00, Thursday at 1:00. Reason being, people have different schedules. We want to, again, be as inclusive as possible as folks say, I can, I work at this time, or I can't. We just need you to come. So there's any one of the three options to come. If you need to mix match, so in January, I need to come at 7:00, or the next month, I need to come at 1:00, great, we just need you here. It's the same content at the Tuesday, the Wednesday, and the Thursday. So the school folks do the same presentation and the same activities and ask the same questions, but we just are trying to be very flexible in helping people to get, to be able to participate. Again, coming back to our three verbs, educate, plan, inspire. That first meeting is all about education in January, 11th, 12th, and 13th. We want to talk about enrollment trends. Mrs. Carpus asked me about this, we actually did get the OFCC report, and I was shocked.
That was fast.
Yeah, it was. It came this week. So that will be a part of it. That enrollment shows all kinds of demographic information about our district, and it gives us a number of students that we should plan for, and it's a scientific basis, this is how the OFCC builds schools, kids equals square feet equals dollars. It's essentially the equation. And so we would be able to now have that updated information. Cost of operating 15 schools. We have to be better at showing how we do lose by operating 15 schools. We lose. We lose opportunities for kids, we lose the fact that we have watered-down athletic opportunities, that we're forced to close classes at one campus that can't, don't have enough students to operate. We lose efficiency by having 15 schools, and we have to do a better job of showing people what that means from an educational perspective and from an operations perspective. We want to show people the necessary renovations and the renovate-replace ratios. This is work the OFCC did. This is where they come in and say, you're going to have to put new windows in these buildings in five years, and here's what the cost is. We talked, we showed the renovation ratio, renovation, rebuild ratios last time, but we didn't talk about why, we just put the numbers up. If you remember, I think the first step was actually 105%. It would actually cost 105% to fix Pleasant View than it would to just rebuild it. That was the worst. Everybody was over 66, and many were in the hundreds or, you know, 70s or 80s. Opportunities presented by new facilities, we have to keep coming back to that. There are many, many people who just don't believe it makes a difference. And so these opportunity pieces are really, it's incumbent upon us as educators to say, how would we use these spaces differently? Why does it make a difference for kids to attend a brand-new bodega at Mid Park High School as compared to a 1958 Harma Senior High School, 1963? We have to be intent about why this is important for an educational process. We have gone ahead and, as a senior leadership team, created pros and cons of the master plans. So we've looked at, you know, what are the pros and cons to one high school and two middle schools? What are the pros and cons to three secondary schools? Now, that's us presenting, but it'll also be a conversation, and I'll talk about how we'll open that up. We don't want, we want this to be a give and take, and I'll show you how we'll do that in a second. The cost of the master plan. So we really sort of did it over that last time. We want to be really intent about showing, here's how much it costs to have one high school, two middle schools, here's how much it costs to have three secondary schools, here's how much it costs to have two high schools and two middle schools. All of the different combinations, the OFCC has already priced those for us. And so we need to show people and just have that, again, as part of the educational process. The questions piece is this. So, okay, we've thrown this information at you, and we, anytime we have any type of presentation, I would put our curriculum instruction department, Dr. Schneider, myself, we know how to engage, we know how, it's not going to just be a sit-and-get. We're going to do activities with folks so that they, you know, have some input, and it's a think, pair, share, and it's a read, write, discuss, all of the same things we want our teachers to use in the classroom, we model that. And we'll do that at these meetings. And so at the end, we're going to say, okay, now you've got this information, what questions do you have? What else do you want us to go back to with you two in February, to help you make an educated decision? Further, what pros and cons do you see? So that when we're, you know, compiling a final pros and cons list for our community, it's inclusive, because we'll show you how we're going to engage the entire community also. February, second meeting, we educate, still in that educational mindset, the question responses. So anything people ask us, hey, we want to see this, we want to see this piece of data, this piece of research, we'll have that for the February meeting. We'll have a panel discussion, and because we're doing it three times, it might have to just be some videos, too, but we'll have some presentation of other construction projects that, again, enriches the conversation and gets people thinking, wow, this is what it looks like in North Homestead. This is why a secondary campus can work, north of, North Homestead being 6 through 12. And then again, coming back to opportunities presented by new facilities, we have to keep coming back to that. In March, now we go more into the planning mode. We haven't seen yet, because it's a different bullet, but part of what we want to do is, we know that, quite frankly, if you asked me a goal, my goal would be 120. If you can get 120, 40 people at each of those meetings, each of those three cohorts, I think that would be phenomenal. But we know that even 120 people, not 110,000 people. So we're also, and this comes from the conversation you had, we're going to dedicate the winter monitor to educating the community, also providing survey, there'll be a QR code on the monitor that people can scan, and it takes them right to the survey. There'll also be a hard copy at all of the places that we deliver, what do we call it? Fast facts? Fast facts to right now. So the libraries, the city halls, any place that we're putting, you know, our literature, we'll also put the survey there. Now, we are going to require a name, address, and an email address, because, again, we want to honor that residency factor. If people lie, folks, people lie. I mean, we're not, I can have Sally at the front desk pardoning people when they turn them in. That would be fun life, wouldn't it? So it's important that they're actual residents, and if they put some, some false information there, they should... So in March, instead of us just taking that information, we're going to take that information, we're going to present it to these folks who have invested probably about three hours now in two meetings, educating themselves. And so, yes, that community input from the all-call survey is important, but it shouldn't be the be-all, end-all. It should be incorporated into the folks that we spent all this time educating with and what they're starting to develop in their minds. And then we'll ask them to provide input. We'll, again, keep coming back to that opportunities presented by new facilities. That's, again, that educational piece. Now in April, 5th, 6th, and 7th, we as the team, and that's the board, that's the senior leadership team, we've taken the efforts from March. So by, at the end of March, at the end of that meeting, people are walking out saying, here's what I want. They're casting a vote, so to speak. And it's based upon what they've learned, but it's also based upon, we've seen the community and what they've said through these, these surveys that they've completed. We'll take that data and we'll come again to the committee to say, here's what we heard, here's what we think you are, and is this right? And by that point, we, we hope that it's pretty clear, and quite frankly, consensus does not mean agreement of all, right? It means the closest we can come to something that everybody can agree to. And that meeting gives us an opportunity to talk about, here's why we arrived at this. What we didn't do, if you think back to last time, nobody really saw our plan until, I think it was about December 19th, and then we presented it. And then people are like, huh. And there was about, maybe it was December 7th, because there were two weeks between that time and the actual board of resolution that we voted on. So this process allows us to come back to the committee and say, hey, here's what we've heard, are we on, and what questions do you have, and what concerns? Quite frankly, I mean, if it's close to fully baked cake, what concerns do you have? Because we need to be ready to answer those. And so that would be the purpose of the ethical meeting. May really gets into two aspects. Now we get into the inspire part. Educate, plan, inspire. We come back again to cost of operating 15 schools. And I know, and I love Mr. Schweitzer, and Mr. Schweitzer knows this, but my feeling is that at this point, we need to be clear about what a plan B would be. If we're not going to pass, this is what's going to happen. And I've had conversations with people on both sides of the aisle in this one. There are some folks who say, you can't put a gun to people's heads, and they expect them to play, you know, vote yes. But there's also folks, and I will tell you, our team, our internal team thinks we have to be very clear that the only time we've seen levies pass in Fire Run was when it was literally a list of classes that were going to go away if the levy failed. We played the nice, inclusive, all, you know, all-in with the, with, with community input and no sort of, here's what's happening if we don't pass. We failed twice, and we still have 15 schools. So people can rightfully look at us and say, I voted twice, but you didn't do anything. Still have three high schools, we still have three middle schools, we still have eight elementaries. I think it's time to really be clear about, if we can't get over the hump, here's what happens next. Here's what happens next, and the reason there's only one meeting dedicated to that, we'll put together some options as a senior leadership team and make sure the board's okay with that as well, and get some input on those options. But really, it's a far less creative process than, you know, creating a master plan. I mean, there's 15 schools, there's 9,300 kids, there's not that many different combinations that we can split this into. So it'd be some options, we'd get some input, again, knowing that the board has last word on everything. But that's sort of the, the plan in terms of what this would look like. The other piece that I wanted to say was the winter monitor, and I already sort of sort of touched on this, but this is how we get to everybody. The winter monitor goes to every home in our district. It will land February 12th through 15th, which is right in time for a March 1st deadline. Complete that survey by March 1st. Again, the hard copies will be available. We'll put as much information in there as possible. Again, try to educate. We realize that people, some people might just grab the survey and, you know, fill it out with their heart and their affiliations or whatever. And that's fine. But we're going to do the best we can to educate. All meetings broadcast on Facebook Live, archived on YouTube. Transparency has been a core value since we've come here. Move transparency across our communities. This will be no different. So Amy and Gary, we're going to be best friends. You're going to be here all. Just a couple dates and then we'll just, we might as well finish that piece and then get to your questions. If you are receptive to this idea of really sort of two-pronged approach, one being the committees, one being the all-call surveys, we will impitate, impitate? We will invite people next week. And again, we encourage you to participate in that process with us, please. We'll have, the availability to sign up will be next week. April 21st, we would see this process through and present a master plan for board approval. That's a board meeting. And actually, it's perfect because the OCC needs to know so that they can do their final cost estimates. They'll estimate it anyway, so we're not, you know, shooting darts in the dark here. But the final plan would be due to them by April 22nd so that they can finalize their numbers so that we can get a millage and be ready to go on ballot. So I took questions really kind of rapid fire and then went into this committee piece and it kind of went a little bit longer. So questions, comments, concerns, this is not a finalized process.
John, go first.
We'll go with our board president.
Love you too, Charlie. However, no, I, the process you've set up, I don't, first of all, let me, we all know, and it's a little strange for me, because almost all the dates you have on here, I won't be, excuse me, a board member at that point. But I'll be a citizen. The reason I ended up on the board was because I was a citizen and opened my big mouth at Parma High when there was time of consolidation, and then at the library and so on and so forth. And I represented at that point, you know, the general feelings of a lot of people. And that's when we did not have a solid, in-the-black, five-year forecast. That's when we were predicted to be a million dollars in debt within a few simple months. Okay? So, you know, I see this, you know, kind of as a different thing. But let me start with what you gave us, 23,658. In almost any other election year, and you go back and look all you want, that's a win. The November election of 2020 was one of the strangest general elections in the history of the United States. And the whole Biden-Trump thing had America, you know, kind of split in half and everything became political. Whereas a school levy is really not supposed to be political. It's supposed to be people deciding whether it's the best thing for the community, the children, and so on. But it became a little more political than that. But normally, 24,000 yes votes is a win and shovels it being the ground. But that didn't happen. And then the votes didn't come out, as you mentioned, in May. I've had actually, and I was telling you, may I ask you this just today, I've had more conversations since I lost the election with people that have called and, you know, you're still going to do this and you're going to, more people than I even knew I knew, quite honestly. And some of the message, some of what I'm getting is that the message didn't get out. You were mentioning that. And how do you get the message out? I mean, there was so many people, I mean, I have this sheet at home that people don't even know the size of the three secondary, three high school campuses, quite honestly. Everybody, literally, not everybody, but the novice people in the community think Parma High's the biggest, Valley Forge the second biggest, Normandy's the smallest. When in reality, Valley Forge is the biggest, Normandy is the second biggest, and Valley Forge, I mean, and Parma High acreage is the smallest. Okay? The east-west divide. I give tours, I've mentioned this in other meetings, just because I'm the old guy in the alumni association, I give tours of Parma High. And I gave a tour to the 50th reunion, which means they were old people, okay, including me. A lot needed assistance in walking and getting from place to place. And once back in Parma High, realized they couldn't even go on the tour. Because Parma High is a split level. You know, you go down a few feet and there's three steps, and so on and so forth. It had to be left behind. Almost all these older people were novos. But through the conversations and as the day went on, I heard so many times, if I would have known that, I would have been a yes vote. So how do we get them to know in that, I guess, is the question. And that's just not getting these 24,000 out. That's some of the 27,000 that, you know, would be a yes vote if somehow they knew. So I appreciate, you know, that you're really concentrating on, you know, getting the message out. I don't know how to get it to everybody. I mean, that's, I looked at, I went back and looked at how it was printed on the ballot. Construct, furnish, and equip new facilities. Renovate existing facilities, including Parma Senior High School and other permanent improvements. The only school mentioned in there is Parma Senior High. Okay? No sites were mentioned or anything. I don't know what you can do. I don't know if you can or cannot, but Parma Senior High is mentioned. And that was another topic of conversation recently is, you know, wouldn't mind two secondary campuses, but why the heck do I want to pay for a renovated Parma Senior High? If the kids are going to go to those two other schools, let the city worry about that land. Sell it to them. Say, make it profitable. Do something. I'm not, I don't want to pay for the next 15 years, you know, just because it's going to be kind of a cool thing. All right? It's still going to cost me money. So, you know, those are some of the things that have hit me literally since November 2nd. And I said I'd come back to the word consolidation. The only place you have consolidation on here really is Plan B. I'm always like, you know, as soon as you give, as soon as you give a Plan B, now there's a choice. And people are going to look through Plan B and say, that's what I want. Whereas instead of convincing them for Plan A, they've already made up their minds of Plan B, and they're not even going to listen to Plan A. And there's a percentage of people out there that that's going to happen. It's just going to happen. So I'm always in favor of Plan A because Plan B is a punt, quite honestly. And as I mentioned before, that same kind of Plan B four years ago was on the table because we were supposed to be belly-up in a few. Right now, you want to know how we're operating, you know, how do you operate 15 schools? Well, we're operating 15 schools with money in the bank. So why would I want to close one? Thank you. But literally, why would I want to close one? Just so I could have, you know, possibly a better soccer team? Or whatever. To me, you know, that's a punt and something that's not necessary. If it becomes necessary, obviously. Okay? But why would I want to send kids from what the state has said is an old school, not worth me giving you a nickel for to rehab? Why would I want to take kids from there, put them into another old school that the state doesn't want to give you a nickel for to rehab, just to make that other old school a little more crowded? I don't, in my mind, doesn't make sense. Love you, Charlie. That's the unconjugal part to me, to move children from one building that the state considers to be not worth rehabbing into another building that the state considers not to be worth rehabbing. I get it. We need to educate, and I've said this to board members in the past, we need to educate the public on the WHOLE math, the W-H-O-L-E math. That yes, building, building a house costs a lot of money. Building a grocery store costs a lot of money. Building schools costs a lot of money, construction costs. I get that. But we are spending money yearly, safe, warm, and dry, you know, that kind of stuff. And if you really sit down with a pencil and paper, there is a point during this process of people paying the additional taxes where you're actually saving. Okay? And people don't see that in a long-range thing, where you're actually saving. And people also don't see that one mega high school usually, I think, if they went that way, would produce two middle schools. So you had three secondary campuses where the plan that we had was going from six to two. Now, if I own two properties or if I own three, I can tell you what's going to be more expensive for me just as a person, owning three. You know, got to take care of three instead of two. So these are not new thoughts on my part. They're thoughts that I've expressed for the last four years. I still think they're valid. And, you know, don't be surprised if I show up at some of these meetings and you probably hear it again.
You can only know the one verb on the book. Want to be clear.
You'll probably be hearing it again.
Sorry, John. You've already been at your meeting this month. You have to go home now.
It'll be, it'll be when Plan B hits the bricks and you're going to need, you know, the overflow crowded Parma High. You need somebody to talk the crowd down. That's where I'll show up. As we go. So that's off my chest. I get it, you know. Steve's not here, but you four and Mark are the ones who are going to have to, you know, put that vote in, in April. But I really, really hesitate to ever throw a Plan B into anything. And it's not just the consolidation. Because then people, their minds made up, and they're not going to listen to the other side. The people that just want that Plan B, whereas if you, there is no Plan B, at least you got some inkling of a shot to maybe get into their head. I'm done. Who else?
All right, my turn. All right. I had a few things. The first one is, I'm just going to go through the page as we go. I think we all kind of heard this time and time again, the language about it being a community center. And I know that's not what it was. And I think that that lost us some votes. John kind of mentioned if people were like, why are we going to pay for that? I don't think they really understood the value that Parma was going to retain throughout the district, what it was going to house, the opportunities that were still going to be here for students. I think that the way it was worded, and not to anyone's fault, the way it was worded definitely kind of isolated itself from our student population. And that was never the intention or never the case. And so I think that that is, even as we're just kind of, whether or not that's part of the new plan, or is the, we just need to kind of rehash that, that language and make sure that people understand that. Because it was now a barrier that we built up and a challenge we're not going to have to overcome of our own kind of doing. I am so grateful about the mailer because that was one of the things I wrote down. So I am just going to use this to kind of talk about my, for anybody who doesn't know, I pretty much ran Charlie through the wringer when we first started coming out with the full, the first plan, because I had a lot of, I needed to work through a lot of things. And actually, Mr. Vonnas, who said this to me, because there was a point in time where I was like, yes, elementary schools first. And Steve looked at me and he just recently reiterated it again. Why would we build schools for students that aren't even born yet? And that was kind of, I keep coming back to that about the elementary schools first. Our kids that are here right now, our higher school kids aren't going to see new buildings, but our elementary school kids have a shot at seeing new buildings. I think we owe it to them to focus on the secondary campuses first. Because very realistically, these kids in, I mean, you got five years, K through four, in the elementary buildings, maybe, maybe those kind of earners might see a year. Maybe. But a lot of those kids aren't even born yet. And so that is, in my opinion, a reason that's a big thing for me about secondary going first. I just think it's a bigger population and it has the, while I 100% understand the value of early education and everything else, you know, maybe we look at the preschool being part of that in some capacity to really get that first step in there. And that is definitely, I just think that we need to, the kids that are in this school district right now deserve a shot. Because I think we alienate our families if we say we're going secondary, or elementary first, because nobody in the district's really going to benefit from it at this time. One of the things that I really liked, and I think that you're kind of, you were kind of getting there, the way you were explaining this, all of this, was we were at Capital Conference. One of the people that we talked to explained how they helped with a master plan in another school system. And they took, what does the portrait of a graduate look like? What does a graduate of the Parma City School District look like? What are their opportunities that they had during their educational career here? You know, what networking did we help them get? Where are they headed in the future? What skills do they leave with? How are those tied to our courses? And how do new facilities enhance our ability to teach those courses? Because I think that we really kind of separated again the building from the student. And it was no fault of anybody else's. It just, it became the narrative that it was all about buildings, 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 but not so much about why those buildings are good for kids. And I mean, you hit it on that. But that was just a way that, when that person explained it to me, I was like, oh, that's a different way to look at it and a great way to kind of delineate down the cycle. Okay, you might throw something at me now. I have always felt that if you don't pass this, this is going to happen as a threat. However, I do think that they need to know the what would happen instead. But I think it is our responsibility to do it in a way that is not punitive, but is educational. John said it best. Why would we want to take kids in one older and now building and put them into another older? We don't want to do that. But it is our job to make sure that if this is what's going to happen, families know that this is essentially what's happening. So it doesn't have to be a bright and rosy picture, but it should not be threatening and it should not be punitive. It should not be like, you did not pass the bond levy, we're closing your school. It shouldn't be like that because our community shouldn't feel like that. But I think we need to do an education piece. It cannot just be, oh, these are the buildings that'll get closed. It has to be, what is the new with the bond? This is what the new footprint of the Parma City Schools will look like and what it'll look like for kids. If this is Plan B, this is what it's going to look like and this is the footprint. And these are the things, increased class, you know, all those things that are going to go with that. All of those things need to be laid out. And it does have to be an option, not a threat. But it has to be a very edu, because John's right. Once people can make up their mind, I mean, if I walk into somewhere and everything on the platter, everything on the menu is 50 bucks, and there's a $20 thing here, I'm going for the $20 thing. I'm not even looking at these $50 items. And so I think that, you know, if the $20 thing said, well, I'm a quarter of the size and I'm, you know, not cooked, ready to order, and all those other things, I'd be like, hmm, let me go over here and see what I'm getting for my money. And I think that's a good way to kind of have that conversation with folks. So this would be shooting for the November 2020 midterms, right? That would be the way, okay. The last thing I will say is, I would like, and I heard this very often, I think we've talked about it before, I know that we won't necessarily know, if we have to do this in phases, what exactly the next phase would look like. But having a general idea of what it would look like, here's what it would cost in today's dollars, knowing that with inflation, it's going to go up when we come to Phase Two. Having that kind of outline and that roadmap for this is where we're headed, I think is important to the community. Because I kept hearing that, well, what exactly is Phase Two? I mean, they weren't satisfied with, well, we're going to close the elementary schools. They wanted, you know, some clear-cut kind of plans on what it would look like. And it doesn't need to be, you know, precise, but a general idea and a general idea of how much that second phase was going to cost. And I think being able to show them how much comes off of that 37% and then how much, you know, again with that.
Yeah. And I just want to, we actually had that, it was like 1.5 mils. So we had six elementary schools, each about, I think it was 450 kids each maybe. But what you're echoing is how hard it is to get the message out.
Yes.
Because I believe 100% what both of you said, which is, people didn't know that. And yet that was as clear as we could explain it. Like, and that was, we tried to show, okay, so you take the big body of the apple now, and the second body of the apple, which is six new elementary, was only, it was not even like 1.5 mils, and we would put some breathing room there. But I totally hear you. I mean, it's, we have to dumb down and messaging.
I think the education piece, regardless of if people are going to, you know, there's some folks that I met that just could not afford to vote yes. That is always going to happen. But I will tell you, some of those people I had the most engaging conversations with, because they were truly interested. Because maybe they had a vote no because they knew they couldn't afford it, but their niece could afford it, their daughter could afford it. And they spread that message. And so no conversation is, you know, no conversation is lost. Every conversation is for the educating people. And I just think that that is, that is where we have to get. And we can't just keep reaching to the same pool of 250 folks to, you know, hear what they have to say. Because your base is always, you're Hamilton and Philharmonic in Hamilton that says you will always be adored by the things you create. We will, everything's always going to be praised by, you know, us in our little inner circle here. So definitely getting out there. I don't want to find out at the polls again and we missed the mark.
I said I was done. But it's the message. I mean, so many people, if you sat and talked to people that were going, we just had a friendly conversation. And suddenly, oh, why didn't you tell us that? We did it 8,000 frickin' times.
We tried to.
All right. Here, Cindy. This much will be redundant. I have very
I have very many similar experiences to what John described, talking to people that did not know. So when I see the education focus on every single segment of the plan, I'm, 100%, that's what we need, you know, just 100%. And it's, it's a tough climb. It's challenging to get people. But I had so many conversations with people that, and many of them were positive, they're voting for the school, let me, because, you know, they don't have kids in school, they haven't had kids in school, but they understand the investment in the community. They understand their kids went through and got educated. And as citizens, our responsibility is to do the best we can to educate the children in our charge. And so they were, they were in on voting for it. But as we had conversations about it and got deeper into it, last fall, before I was even back on board, and certainly a lot in May or in the springtime, oh my gosh, you have to tell people that. Oh, you know, I voted for it, but I didn't know that, I didn't know that, I didn't know that, you know? And people are busy, they have other things going, everybody has other stuff going, like, you know, that they're busy and their attention is diverted from what is top and uppermost on our minds every day. So we have to realize that and keep remembering that. But the education piece is just, you know, we have to just kill ourselves getting the message out, because it's, it's unfortunate that a lot of people just won't seek to get the knowledge, or, you know, just don't understand some of the important parts of this. I think, I just mentioned a couple of other things, I think a big part of what we have to help people understand in this, is the cost of new schools is a huge savings over time, and how costly it is to maintain the schools that we have. That cost differential is a pretty big deal, because if we had new buildings for several years, there would be almost no investment in maintenance, you know, other than the day-to-day basic stuff that we have to do. There wouldn't be any of these big costly things that we have to do to all these older buildings, which is getting more and more difficult, because it's hard to find some of the pieces and the parts and the wherewithal to be able to repair some of these things. So I think that's an important part to drive home, the cost savings that come with the new buildings. And, you know, if we do do a Plan B, what those costs are to maintain it, maintain those buildings, as well as if we consolidate to fewer buildings, you know, how that would be a cost savings, if it would be, you know, a cost savings. And Sean, for you to figure out, I guess, how long can we go in this good, strong financial situation that we're in if we don't do something new? You know, if we don't have bond issues, then at what point does this catch up with us, this other stuff with old buildings? And we would have to go for operating with the end, you know? So that's another concern. And as far as, to me, I look at the secondary buildings being the first step because of the excitement of our parent community. We have no parents that would be invested, really, in the plan if it's elementary first. By the time the buildings were built, their kids are out of elementary. So unless they have babies or the unborn, no parents in our district are going to have the personal excitement for their children of doing elementary first. They won't be able to benefit from that. And I think that's something we need to capture, as big stakeholders in terms of being excited and inspired by the plan, because otherwise, yes, they may support it, yes, it's, but they're not strong advocates for it. And we desperately need strong advocates out there sharing the message across the community. So I strongly lean towards the secondary buildings first, so that our, some of our current families can look forward to and enjoy that for their children as well.
Can I ask this question real quick? I know we haven't heard from Jack yet, but, I mean, I've heard Mrs. Carperz and Mrs. Brod talk about strongly leaning toward secondary. My concern is, what I don't want to do is get into this, you know, community-based, community approach, and then, you know, we see it's 66 to 33 elementary, and we throw that out, because, I mean, is it okay to still?
Oh, absolutely. So I have always said this, that it is community-driven. That's my personal belief. And I think that it will, I think based on all of my conversations, it's going to resonate true with the numbers.
It was 66, 33 last night, honestly. 66% of the people said start with secondary. That wasn't a board-driven message.
And I think we're going to say that same.
I didn't, I didn't mention that, but for decades in this, in this district, the talk has been, and I'm sorry to use the word consolidation, but that's what we campaigned on the last two, was consolidating the secondary into two new campuses. We have gone, I mean, we have consolidated hugely already in elementary over the years, and in, and in, we went at one point from six junior highs to two, and then had to go back to three, quite honestly. Shiloh was shuttered up for a while. And the talk has always been, but the one area we never touched was, there's still three high schools. So, you know, consolidating into new, in my mind again, from, you know, the six camp, secondary campuses to two, was certainly addressing that. And I think that in, in our district, at least what I've heard, and not just in the four years I've been on the board forever, is, we don't need three high schools. And so building the two new and one new, you know, however that would go, would address that as a consolidation and the excitement that we're talking about. But yeah, I don't know, you shut down, any, any citizen wants to talk and bring stuff up. But I don't see that as something that's going to flip-flop from 60 something, 30 something to the other way.
I'd be surprised.
Yeah, that's, that is, and to one other thing, we have taken the haggle to elementary schools repeatedly. Like, it wasn't just one time. I mean, that went from your time on the board, closing school, closing elementary schools, to, I mean, my kids have been impacted by it, and shifting our kids around. The kids that are in high school right now, and unfortunately, we're never going to be able to rectify this, are, they're juniors right now. Those are the kids that got really shifted in the last wave of elementary consolidations. Then they got bumped up first time, fifth grader, you know, that situation, and then they were at eighth grade, I mean, they did all those different, they were all those first kids. So those kids are still in our buildings that were part of that last round of that. So I am, but no, I, I 100% if the community comes back and says, this is what we want, our job is to listen, I mean, literally, the five of us are elected to listen to the community.
And hey, they may come up with some thoughts and ideas that have escaped us, that, and hopefully there will be some things that come forward that are new and fresh and exciting for us to consider in a plan. So there may well be things that can come up that, that can change our minds on things.
You've got to get the people there. You guys have to get the people there. I mean, that's the key, not, not 10, 15 people, mostly staff members showing up, we need the community.
Mr. Christ, your turn, sir.
It's my turn now? It's your turn.
You didn't raise your hand, honey.
Well, I, I don't want to be a negative Nelson all the time, but 2,100 people would have changed their mind in that November election, which is less than 5%, we'd have passed. That's, that's a pretty good, that's a pretty low amount, when you think about changing people's mind from one to another, from yes to no. 2,100 people, we would have passed the election. I think, I think the problem with the May, May election is the turnout, it's very, it's very low. It's always going to be very low. There's nothing exciting to get people to the ballots, it, the general election will do it. I also agree with Cindy, almost 100% on everything she said. I don't mean to, it just, it'll just cut my mind a little shorter. But I think the last time, my, this is my opinion and what I've heard of people, and I apologize, I'm being, with the cancer, I don't get out as much as I used to. I used to be a lot more active in the community than I am now. But, that being said, the people that I have talked to, they think that the North Side was left out of the conversation when we went to the two high schools. Or more than once, we went from 26,000 students in 1973, when I was in, at Parma High, to, to 9,500. I, I've heard this, not, not only do I agree with it, but I, I've heard this from more than one person, that we don't need three high schools, we need one high school, one super campus and get it done. And, yeah, we'll offend some people, because we're going to lose some high schools, but if you look at the, the overall crowd of people that are looking at voting, then, most of them don't have children in the district than do. More have no children in the district, and I think that they're thinking the same thing. One high school is cheaper to operate, and I can't agree more with the, not only the maintenance, but the utilities, the technology limitations to these old buildings. It's time, it is time to build new, new schools. Now, now that being said, education is a tough thing, but I think if we start with a more positive outlook toward the whole, coming down and saying, this is where we're, we're starting from, I, I think that we, we're on solid ground. And, and the 2,100 people is just, is a close election. And if we do another November, we have plenty of time to, to work on this, although I, I see some opposition, vocal opposition to it, but I think that positive can overcome negative.
I'm still waiting for when you said it was going to be negative.
Well, I, I'm a negative guy, only because I think we should have one high school. I know some people don't think that, and I.
I didn't hear anything that you said negative.
Okay, well, I believe we should have one high school.
It was very constructive and positive.
And, you know, I've lived in this community almost all my life.
Oh, very constructive.
I went to Parma Senior, my children all went to Normandy, and now I live in the Valley Forge District. So I've been in all three areas and.
Another Parma High grad, Parma High teacher.
All right, I have a message from Steve.
Like green, red, and gray.
I have a message from Steve. He is not a fan of the idea of a Plan B. While one high school promotes larger athletic teams and you have a possibility of being excellent, we are in the business of educating kids, and research shows that smaller schools are more educationally sound. He prefers, opinion, prefers the original plan, it made the most sense. And to quickly speak to the North part of Parma being left out, Charlie can test about this, I went in hard about North Parma. And the numbers, when, I think the community needs to see the numbers. I think the community needs to see, if East-West is the option, they have to see that socio-economically, that diversity-wise, that creates the best for us. You don't have an us versus them, of those kids over here and these kids over here, it created the most unified versions of schools. I think that that was another messaging that we, we can enhance on, but that's if that becomes the plan, or remains the plan, rather.
Yeah, please, we, anybody that's not back at the table, I just.
Oh, absolutely.
I just wanted to.
Yeah, everything's, we're going to have to think about, we have another meeting in a few weeks.
Oh, we do, yes. But yes, Jackie, we're not alone, my husband went at me hard about North being left out.
And I've heard it, I mean, when I represented Ward Three, I heard it all the time. People that live on the North Side of Snow felt that the people on the South Side of Snow had better services.
But some of those folks go to Normandy, right?
So, you know, again.
No, one, a quick thing, and anybody can get the demographics down to the timeline, quite honestly. Where I, when I went to Parma High and Normandy was just being built, there was really nothing south of Pleasant Valley, quite honestly. All those developed where you live, where I live, they didn't even exist in 1968. So, like, one thing that has to be considered, that I've tried to get across to people, is the entire eastern half of Seven Hills, and the entire, not the entire, but a good part of the southern part of Parma have been developed since the last school building we built.
Parma built more houses in the 1970s than any other, any other city except for Strongsville and Cogtown.
That's what I'm saying, and we haven't, and we didn't build a new school, I mean, Normandy's 68, that's the answer. I mean, Fay came in and out like a, like a snap, but you have to consider, this is three communities, and when you look at the size, going from one far end corner to the other far end corner, in my mind, the East-West divide still makes the most sense. I get the one campus, I, when you just look at pure numbers of people, but you have to look at size and distance and, and busing and everything else that goes with it, I mean, that's, that's huge. I mean, this is a huge area. You go from the, you know, Chevy plant, to all the way up on, you know, Sprague and Broadview.
So, I mean, I.
The past, Broadview.
This is, this is why this remains a daunting challenge, yet a very fun challenge, because, you know, we can all have these kinds of conversations with our family members, with our neighbors, with our friends, and bar, or whatever, and go into 17 different plans, and this is why, my question tonight, and I just, and I think, you know, this, this looks like a process that we can use moving forward to try to get to a consensus answer.
I think the process is good, Charlie. My last official word on it. The rest of the time is going to be unofficial.
This is a very thoughtful plan. I think we've identified, or you have, and the team has identified, the important obstacles, the passage of the past, a really good link campaign, very inclusive campaign, to try to educate, love that, love it. It's, it's what we have to do, people have to understand. It's going to be a great challenge, but it's, I think that's exciting too, because I'm really hopeful that we can, in general, have people become more supportive of public education in our community, understanding they have input to this, and be inspired by the possibilities for the future. I think it's, it's excellent and really good. I'm glad you're on top of this now, you know?
I'm going to play president for a minute here. Any other comments or questions come to board?
Thank you though, for all the feedback.
Thanks for the nice presentation. Seeing none, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-12502 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution 2021-12502. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Switzer.
Yes?
Mrs. Carperz.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-12502 has been approved, this meeting is adjourned.